Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's always good to see the members of the public in person, and everyone is welcome. The public can also choose to watch the meeting at burnsville.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. And the public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. The first item on the agenda is the announcements for all of our upcoming meetings, and we have two proclamations and a report. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, May 6 at 5:30 p.m., Tuesday, May 20 at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, May 13 at 5:30 p.m. This evening, April 22, we have a closed work session for the city manager's performance review, and that's at 6 o'clock in Dakota B. We have a special work session for our quarterly roundtable, and that is Tuesday, April 29 at 5:30 p.m. Unless it is noted, and I report, all meetings of the city council are held in the chambers. We have two proclamations, and the first one is for Earth Day and Arbor Day, whereas Burnsville has taken great pride in the quality of our natural environment, including the beautiful shade trees and native plants that provide many essential services to the community and enrich our lives in many ways. And whereas the city of Burnsville Sustainability Plan lays out the foundation for the city's continuing sustainability efforts to support the environment, human and financial vitality for our community and future generations. And whereas we need to practice safe environmental approaches in managing our forest, lakes, wetlands, open spaces, buildings, and infrastructure. And whereas Burnsville promotes development that maintains or enhances economic opportunity and community well-being while protecting and restoring the natural environment. The purpose of Earth Day Arbor Day celebration is to emphasize the importance of preserving our natural environment through sustainable activities such as recycling, waste reduction, and resource conservations. And whereas Burnsville recognizes the need to protect and preserve the beauty of our community by promoting sustainability of our natural and built environment for future generations. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 25 to be Earth Day and Arbor Day in the city of Burnsville in celebration the city hosts an annual community tree sale at the end of April. Learn more online at www.burnsville.gov/treesale. Find tips for sustainability and energy efficiency on our sustainability dashboard website. Proclaim this 22nd day of April 2025. The next proclamation is Tourism Awareness Week. Whereas the city of Burnsville, Minnesota recognizes the value and importance of the travel and tourism industry to our local economy, culture, and overall community well-being. And whereas travel and tourism continue to serve as a vital contributor to Burnsville's economic growth and prosperity, generating employment, encouraging business development, and fostering meaningful cultural exchange. Whereas travel and tourism inspire deeper appreciation for Burnsville's diverse heritage, unique attraction, and natural beauty, enhancing quality of life, and strengthening our shared community pride. The city of Burnsville is committed to supporting and celebrating achievements and impact of travel and tourism on the vibrancy and vitality of our city. Whereas National Travel and Tourism Week celebrates annually in May, offers a dedicated opportunity for communities across the country to spotlight and uplift the importance of travel and tourism. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4 through the 10th, 2025, to be National Travel and Tourism Week. I encourage businesses and residents to join me in recognizing the people, places, and experiences that made Burnsville a welcoming and dynamic destination for both our visitors and those of us who proudly call it home. Proclaim this 22nd day of April 2025. And at this time, I'd like to welcome from the MBTA, two of our partners that's going to be presenting and giving us a report of what's happening at MBTA. And so I believe Matt Faiton, the Chief Development Officer, is going to present first, and then Joya Stetson, the Community and Economic Development Director, will present later. Matt, welcome, Mr. Faiton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kouts. Appreciate the welcome, and city council members, Mayor Kouts. Happy to be here to give an update on MBTA, or Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, as we're known. Obviously, I am not Luther Winder, our CEO. He unfortunately, I'll say that he was advocating too much for MBTA's interest and lost his voice, but I think he's just honestly feeling a little bit under the weather and doesn't really have a voice, otherwise he very much would have been here tonight. So apologies that you're stuck with me, but I will, Joya and I will do our best.
We welcome you both, yes. And we know that we always have to pivot when these things happen.
That's right.
You know? We have no control over.
So go easy on me with the questions. No, no, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has. So just, yes, here to provide an update, really the past year of MBTA and our services and our outreach efforts. So first, just high level about MBTA. So we operate, obviously, we're the city of Burnsville's transit operator and also operating for the six surrounding communities, Shakopee, Prior Lake, Savage, Apple Valley, Eagan, and Rosemont. I believe I got the rest of them there. We operate a fleet of 170 buses. We have 24 routes for both express and local routes on our fixed route service. We operate 14 parking rides or transit stations, and then we operate out of two garages as well to operate all those services. I just want to provide a quick snapshot of our services in Burnsville specifically. I won't name every single route here, but we do have four express routes that we operate, and we do operate five local routes. I do want to note that the For Fun Route on the local route is actually our seasonal route, which actually just started here in March, which services Mall of America, Eagan Outlet Mall, Burnsville Transit Station, Valley Fair, Canterbury, and Mystic Lake. So if you can't have fun on that bus, I don't know where you're going to find the fun, honestly. So that operates seasonally, March Thursday through Sunday, and that's March through, really, I'll say about the end of October, somewhat variable on when Valley Fair's season.
And the times that they can catch the bus?
I believe Joy's going to potentially have to help me out. I believe it's every half hour, hourly service on that service? Hourly service bi-directionally on that.
And they catch the bus at any of the stops?
Any of those stops. Burnsville Transit Station is the one stop that we have here in Burnsville, but any of those stops, they're able to utilize the route either direction. In terms of ridership for 2024 compared to 2023, we do continue to climb out of the, we'll say, the large dip we took during the pandemic, so we're still clawing our way back service-wise from that. We are 10% up overall ridership from 2023. As this broken down, our express service is up about 10% compared to 2023, and then our local service is actually down 2%, but some of that is not surprising for us because we did reallocate, due to we only have so much funding available to us right now, which I will get to later in the slide deck here. We did reallocate to our very popular micro-transit service, MBTA Connect, which you'll see coming up here, had a different ridership increase. But, so just kind of where we're at snapshot from, you know, looking at whatever the new normal is going to be for transit from the pandemic, because there certainly has been shifts in ridership and how people utilize the transit service since the pandemic. In March 2025, our system-wide ridership is at 46% of pre-pandemic levels, so you can see an increase from, we were at 43% in 2024, and then 38% of pre-pandemic levels in 2023. So we're slowly coming back on that front. Year-to-date ridership in 2025 compared to 2024, we are up 5.2% overall. I do want to highlight our fastest-growing service, which is our MBTA Connect micro-transit service, which Burnsville is within what we consider our main zone, so primarily residents are able to get anywhere, really in the communities of Savage, Burnsville itself, Apple Valley, and Rosemont. Eagan has a separate zone right now, and Shakopee and Prior Lake have a different zone. I'll give you a little bit more detail coming up here. But in terms of where ridership is at, in 2024, we had a 44% increase in ridership compared to 2023, with that represented a 44% increase with average daily ridership of about 430 rides throughout 2024, with an average wait time for customers on that service at around 25 minutes. We try to keep, in order to keep a cost-effective service on that, on that service, we try to keep our wait times certainly under 30 minutes. We'd like to have it closer to that 20 minutes, but so if we see that 24 minutes, that's about, we'd like it to be a little shorter wait time, but it's still kind of in that sweet spot of where we see the best bang for your buck as a taxpayer for that type of service. I just want to note, as I mentioned, the Connect is expanding. We continue to focus on connecting, expanding the Connect service where possible. I didn't mention that actually in January of this year, we expanded the Connect service zone to the far western here in Shakopee and Prior Lake that you see here on this map, Burnsville being in the largest main zone here, and then like I said, Eagan has its own zone. We do have goals to eventually merge the zones so that there's greater access throughout the communities as we gain more resources and funding for the service. I do want to highlight the, you've probably seen them going around the communities plenty at this point, our new e-Just vehicles that we purchased last year. It's the first of their kind, operating in the country, fully electric, not that it's the first fully electric vehicle, but this type of vehicle operating in the country for this type of service, and we're finding that it is, really is living up to its billing in terms of the amount of range that it has, and it really is working well for our services, not just demoing an electric vehicle, it truly is providing meaningful service for a long period of time, and we're very happy to see the results of that, those vehicles being implemented.
Yeah, Councilmember Schultz.
Do you have a guesstimate or a goal date for when those sections are connected?
It's a good question.
You on the spot?
No, no, it's a perfectly valid, great question. I'd say our goal would be within just a general time horizon, probably two years, just in terms of lining up the amount of vehicles and funding that we would need to get that operating. I would like to do it faster, but that's probably realistic. The big question mark, you know, I'll get to the end of the presentation, is really on the funding piece. You know, we, we want to make sure that we maintain really our bread and butter services still, which are fixed route, but we obviously have this growing service that we want to fund as well, so we're constantly under negotiations with the Met Council, working at the state legislature to try and secure those additional funds to allow that to happen. But it's certainly in our plans and our goals that we're working towards to expand the service, one way or the other.
Well, I hear really good feedback from our residents on that. They like that a lot, especially.
It's a great alternative to Uber and Lyft.
Yes.
From what I hear from people, they, they like that. And the wait time is almost comparable.
Generally, yeah, we try to, again, you know, it's, I always like to equate it that, so micro-transit, which MBTA Connect is, is equitable to, you know, what a dial-a-ride service would have been in the past. So it's, you know, dial-a-ride service, the private side, there was taxis. Now it's just the evolution of the public transit version of that is micro-transit, while there's the private side of it, which is Uber and Lyft, which is catering just to different markets at the end. We're a public service providing accessibility and transportation for those who need it most in our communities, as well as providing attractive options for those who may not need it most and still find it a viable option for them too. So yeah, it very much is something that I think is comparable to Uber and Lyft, but it is a shared ride service, which right now Uber and Lyft are not. That's kind of by design, so it's, it's a little bit different, it's filling a different need, but there are those who say that, oh, you know, you're taking away from the private sector. I don't, we've had conversations with Uber and Lyft, they, they don't view it that way at all. In fact, they look for opportunities to partner with us where we possibly could, and those are some conversations that we're having right now, actually, so. Great question, thank you. I do want to touch on the demographics of Connect, so again, who we are serving on the MBTA Connect service. About 65% are actually using the, the service to get to and from work, which is obviously a significant amount there. 47% of our Connect riders do say that if they didn't have this option, they would be really forced to use a service like Uber and Lyft, which our Connect service costs $3 per trip. You know, an Uber, Lyft ride in this area, you know, you can expect at least probably $15 for a trip, so it's.
The nice thing about this that I've also heard is for the reverse commute, and so when they come into the transit station in Burnsville, there is transportation to their workplace.
Correct.
Where before they didn't have that, and, and so this really closed that gap.
Yes, exactly right, Mayor Kouts. Very much the service is utilized from a first mile, last mile standpoint, as we call it, and you know, our transit jargon, making sure that those who may not be by a fixed route transit service have an option to connect to our fixed route services via the service as well. I do want to, so getting back to the demographics as well, so one in five of our MBTA Connect riders has an annual household income of less than $15,000, so again, really serving those in a significant need from an economic standpoint. Over 47%, 47% of our riders are people of color, and 60% of our riders are women on the service. One in, about 1/10 of riders report having a disability or long-term health condition that utilizes the service. All of our vehicles are ADA accessible, they're mandated by law, that would be the case, but we would make that the case anyway to serve our communities. And I just want to point out that over 50% of our riders fall in that age range of about 35 to 55, so very much a working demographic that utilizes the service. Any, just any other questions on Connect?
No. It's very.
Perfect. Do want to highlight also the, so kind of the third bucket of services, we got our Connect service, our fixed route services, and then we have our event services, which is how a lot of the community members are the, you know, if they do utilize our services, this is probably how most community members do, either through our state fair service, we provide service to the Renaissance Festival. Just noting some highlighting service here, so our event ridership in 2024 was at over 217,000, that is a record for MBTA by a significantly wide margin. There is a caveat here, they can see we were up 30% from 2023, but there, I don't know if you recall last July, significant flooding occurring in the Minnesota River Valley, and we got a call from Valley Fair and said, "Our parking lot's going to be underwater tomorrow. Can you help us out?" And we were able to do so, and that resulted in, I want to say, I don't know if we have it on here, but you know, I think it was about 30-plus thousand rides that we provided in about 10 days of service to.
To Valley Fair? Wow.
We were happy to be partners on that front, but that did result in a somewhat inflated ridership number, but even if you take Valley Fair out, we were still up 10% on our special event services. And you know, just for the council's information, for the community's information, you know, we, we provide event services to Minnesota United Games, Vikings, Gopher Football. Each year, you know, we will identify a set of concerts that, you know, predominantly the larger ones, you know, we just sent a bus to Kendrick Lamar this, this past week, and then also ACDC recently, we provided over 500 rides to as well. So the concert services are certainly a popular option for those that don't want to have to drive to manage downtown, so very attractive on that, that front.
Do you also do Twins, the Twins games?
We do not yet. It's something that we are looking at. We do budget right now for playoff games for our major sports services, so actually this weekend's a big weekend for us on the sports front, so we've got both Minnesota Timberwolves and Wild Playoff Service that we are providing service to. We don't do regular seasons games yet, but it's something that we're considering, but right now we're focusing on playoffs. You know, we'll see where the Twins go, but I'm not terribly optimistic that we'll probably go there this year, but you never know, it's early in the season.
Well, one of the things is that I've heard from residents, because some of the issues with metro transit, and even if they went to the Mall of America and pick it up and go, and they don't feel that it's as safe, so MBTA is an option that they wanted to know how they can.
Certainly, certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, obviously, safety is paramount for any, any transit provider, and we are fortunate to, you know, have great buses, clean buses, great providers, you know, great communities that we work in, but you know, safety is paramount for us, and metro transit, I know, is doing everything they can on their, their end too to make it as safe as possible, but they certainly are faced with some, let's say, unique challenges compared to how our services. But our services are very safe, incidents are, you know, minimal to practically nothing on our buses as it relates to the safety aspect of things.
From the games, you have return service as well?
Yes, yes, so the, the $6, you pay $6, covers your round trip, so the service is built out to serve the events, so you know, we'll get you there, and we're not going to leave until obviously the event is over, and you have a period, usually we say about a half hour is when we leave, when the event is over, to give people ample time to get back to the buses and.
Okay.
And make sure that.
Just like the fair.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And yeah, Joy will talk about some community events that we've, we've done here in Burnsville as well, a little bit later on here. I do want to highlight Burnsville in particular, every two years, or actually every year, but every two years, we do a base account of parking rides throughout the region, so the Met Council, Metro Transit asks us to provide information for our parking rides, and then they look at it region-wide to see where parking ride utilization is at for that year. Obviously, we're not where we were pre, pre-pandemic, as I, as I illustrated, but it's worth noting that Burnsville Transit Station is the second highest utilized parking ramp, parking ride in the region, just shy of our, our sister agency, suburban agency Maple Grove has the largest utilization. But here at MBTA, we do have the second and third, Burnsville Transit Station being number two, and Apple Valley Transit Station being number three. So we still, even though I understand it's not as full as it once was, it's still very much as being utilized, and you'll see some cars even on the top level now and then stills. I'll highlight this quick, and then I'll let Joy come up and talk for a brief, well not, well, hopefully, no.
I can be great.
People love talking to Joy, so it won't even feel like it's, you know, brief at all. So we got Burnsville Festival, I want to highlight that. We have over, from 2024, a very successful service, 25% more than 2023, providing over 2,100 rides for the Burnsville Festival, so we were happy to do that. And then we also assisted the city in Burnsville Park Tour, which I know we've done for a number of years.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Of course, of course. So the annual tour of the Park and Natural Resource Commission, I think I was able to join on that too, and I was going to kick out.
You were there last year with us.
So it's, it's always great to see, you know, what the city's working on that front, and just to explore the community. It's usually a nice evening, and so very much appreciate that, so.
Yeah.
With that, I will turn it over to Joya to talk outreach.
Awesome. Thank you, Matt.
Welcome, Joya.
Thank you. I'm Joya Stetson, I'm the Community and Economic Development Director at MBTA, so I've been with the organization for about a year now, and so I've had the pleasure of being able to work with your staff and your council on several different projects and see them at various meetings, so very grateful to be here and kind of be able to give you guys an update today. So my role is really focused on partnership generation and how we can integrate ourselves within the communities to be good partners to you. So I just wanted to showcase a few different partnerships that we've engaged in the last year, and I think first, I just wanted to talk about Buck Hill Service. So this is actually, I think, a timely conversation, because we discussed that it's Tourism Week, right? And Amy, who is the Director of Experience Burnsville, is actually the catalyst for this project. So Amy had met with me and had noted that they were experiencing some parking shortages at Buck Hill, which was limiting their capacity for visitorship, and it was, you know, making some challenges with their event center and their restaurant and their facilities in general. So she had asked if there was any way we could work together to figure out a good solution. So our team was able to meet with Nate from Buck Hill, have a great conversation about what their needs were, what our current services were, and kind of talk through some prospective ideas, and we ended up piloting a route that was able to offer weekend service, which fun fact, was one of only a few weekend-only services and one of about five in the nation that offer public transit access directly to ski resorts. So we were kind of excited to be a pioneer in that realm, and we found that the awareness building was something that was new for us, but I think it's something that was really important. We cross-collaborated with Buck Hill to promote this, they ended up hiring some folks to come take pictures on our buses, we made some videos together, and we were really able to kind of talk through incentivizing the utilization of transit to get to Buck Hill. So we saw ridership continue to increase, the route didn't run too long, it just ran from like January through March on just the Saturdays and Sundays. Go ahead, Mayor Kouts.
Ms. Stetson, will you also run it in the summer when they have their summer concerts?
We haven't determined that we're going to do that yet, but we are always open to discussions about those. Right now, and I'll get into this a little bit later too, but I, I think one of the things that our plan is going forward is to evaluate ridership, evaluate how that went, evaluate like the anecdotal feedback that we had received, and really kind of figure out what are good next steps for us in, you know, potentially providing that service next year, how can we better partner with them, and kind of see what, what would make sense. So I think, you know, that's, that's certainly a discussion we can, we can have.
Because they do have a lot of problems with parking during those events, and, and it was the same issue with regard to the winter activities at, at Buck Hill. So thank you for helping them out. And so do people park then at the shopping center and then catch the bus from there to go to Buck Hill, or do they park at the MBTA Transit Station and then?
Great question. So both is the answer. We ended up, as we discussed internally, what the best process would be for this, we wanted to have it be a multipurpose route, and so the way that we structured it is people could get on at the Burnsville Center, they could also get on at the Burnsville Transit Station and at Heart of the City. So the hope was that people would be able to utilize this on the weekends, where there's maybe limited routes running so that they could still get to work, get to, you know, shopping, get to different locations. And we did see, as we looked at monitoring the stop locations where people were getting on the bus and getting off of the bus, we were seeing that people were using it for multiple purposes like that. So we were happy to be able to provide a service that, yes, served Buck Hill, but also was able to get our community members to various other stops too. So yes, they were able to, and the hope with Heart of the City is that we do have the arterial line coming from the Twin Cities, so people would be able to easily kind of connect there to get to Buck Hill if they were coming from like Minneapolis.
Where in the heart of the city can they catch that bus?
So where the stop is, just right across from the Burnsville Transit Station, yeah.
Okay. On Nicollet?
Yes.
Okay. Because, you know, people would also think about the Red Line Stop.
Yeah, no, we, sorry, we, yes, would stop on the Red Line.
Sorry.
Yes. So yeah, it's, it is the Red Line Stop that we would stop at as part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just right where the buses pick up, so they would just be able to get on and off.
Get on and off, okay.
Yep, yep. So we, and we got some good feedback, there was actually some podcasts that had, you know, gone on the trip to be able to take it from Minneapolis, and there was really positive feedback about the journey, so it wasn't too difficult for people to navigate, and they found it to be a pretty comfortable ride for, you know, even bringing ski equipment and things like that onboard.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll kind of continue those conversations going forward, but I think it was an exciting new partnership for this year.
Yeah, it was just really that this project was, I think, let's see how it works.
Yep.
I think we, I'd say worked relatively well, you know what I'm saying, you know, blew the doors off or anything, but I think there was enough there to say, you know, this is something that made some sense, let's look at some other opportunities, so I think we'll keep those conversations going.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Councilmember Stetson. Do you market that then in the core cities then, that they can actually get out to our area and get to like Buck Hill and all that?
Yeah, we try to push it out as broadly as we can. This one was a little interesting because it was a pretty quick turnaround, we only had just a few weeks between the time that we were able to have the conversation and kind of move forward to actual like implementation and launch of the route, but yes, that's a really great point, that, you know, we do try to work collaboratively with our communities to push out information, and your city staff has done a great job too of being willing and able to share information for us as well. They've even let us have things up at City Hall, which has been nice.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Anything else on that, Matt? You want to put out? Perfect. Also, just wanted to mention that we did participate in some other community events as well, we were tabling at party. We were tabling at Party on the Plaza, so we probably saw many of you there. We did Burnsville Pride as well as Burnsville Juneteenth. And then another cool project we wanted to emphasize was we've been working with the Burnsville High School to educate students on how to utilize Connect to get to internships. And you all know that Jennifer's great from the Chamber, but Jennifer has been instrumental in kind of working with our team to load go-to cards, which allow people to board the bus just by tapping the card. So they were able to get some of those loaded for students so that they could actually take advantage of internships in the community. So we're going to continue to work with them going forward, but that's been a really positive partnership for us as well. Another thing we just wanted to highlight is we did a rider survey last year. So every other year, we try and do a pretty robust survey to understand kind of what our communities think, how can we improve our services that are being provided? And we were very excited because we had a significant number of responses. We had over six hundred, which was a substantial improvement from the previous iteration of the survey. So we are glad to receive that input. And we found a couple of really interesting highlights from the survey. So in the past, when we had done this, the last one was in 2019, our bigger survey. And we had seen that there were about ninety-five percent of people that were using the buses to get to work. And we saw that that trip purpose decreased to about sixty percent. So that is interesting to us, to see that there are so many people that are leveraging MBTA services to get to so many different types of destinations. And it's something that we, as an organization, need to be mindful of, and we do try to be responsive, too. So that's something we're kind of keeping in mind is that, you know, there's, there's a change in who's using the bus and why the bus is needed. So as we look to put out and plan our services, those are considerations that we're making as well. We also saw that, you know, when people are looking at where their starting location is, in 2024, we saw that the starting location wasn't always the transit station. So in 2019, there were eighty-three percent of people said they started their journey at the transit station. Now we're seeing that with the implementation of Connect and different methods of, or modes, people are able to kind of leverage those to get to work different ways. So that has also been a development. As we know, the pandemic was challenging for several transit agencies, including MBTA. And while we aren't, you know, at pre-pandemic levels, we are seeing consistent steady improvement. And that's something that, you know, our team is working really diligently to continue to market and provide really viable services. Just wanted to kind of reemphasize, too, that our team understands that as the world changes and as our needs change, we're monitoring what's happening in our communities. And, you know, we do lean on people like Jeff to be able to communicate with us, share information, and, you know, make sure that we're being responsive and proactive for you all as well. One thing I just wanted to quickly mention on that, too, is if you have any feedback, suggestions, or need anything from us, please reach out at any time, too. I know many of you have my email address, but Matt and I are always happy to, you know, take in feedback or talk with you about suggestions within the community. So please never hesitate to reach out. Like we mentioned, we did have the Buck Hill Route that ran from January through March. As we look to future planning process for MBTA, we're going to continue to analyze this and look at, you know, potential for the future, what that looks like if we run it again, if there's alterations. So that's something we're going to be keeping a close eye on. We also have our four-nine-five-V route, which is our route that will take you to the MSP Airport Terminal One. And you can actually park, fun fact, at the Burnsville Transit Station for up to fourteen days for free, which is an excellent service, too. You just have to register your vehicle with our customer service. And so that is a service that many people may not know about, but we're trying to kind of get more information out there on it. Right now, that runs every two hours. And so we're looking at, you know, how we could potentially increase the frequency to hourly on that. So that's a potential that we're evaluating for the future. And then our route four-four-four.
That is really great because it's like the park and ride. So instead of going to Bloomington and parking your vehicle and then taking, you know, their transit to there, it's easy to just do it here and take the, yeah, that's nice.
Yes.
Okay, that's a great option.
Yeah, absolutely. And we did just put some more information out on social, but I can also get some more information on that specifically to your team so that if you wanted to have information at City Hall, we can, we can share that with you, too. And then we're also looking at potential frequency additions for our route four-four-four as well. So again, really just trying to see how we can better serve the community to provide more frequency where it's needed. So these are things we're kind of keeping our eye on going forward. And then I will hand it back to Matt to talk about capital projects.
Can I ask just one question?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Like on the four-four-four takes you down to, it's a block from my house. So it's easy to get to. But that can take you to the station. Would that, would that act as a transfer to go on to the airport from there, or is that a separate fare?
So the, we do have two and a half hour transfers. So you can transfer to another.
So I could grab the bus at the corner and take the transit station, jump on another bus and go right to the airport?
Yeah, you just would have to ask for a transfer ticket, and then you can transfer to, to any of our fixed routes.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
That's also a great option.
I was just gonna note, the same applies to MBTA Connect. So if you pay the MBTA Connect fare, which is three dollars, the transfer applies to your fixed route then if you're doing it for the first mile, last mile, purpose, so.
Okay.
That's a heck of a service you guys are doing.
All right, apologies, and we're running low on time here, so we'll get through the last couple of slides here. Just want to note some of the capital project initiatives that we are currently working on or have secured grant funding for here in Burnsville. So that we are currently, we have secured some grant funding for the Burnsville Transit Station Mobility Hub. You can see a rendering of what that potentially could look like in the future, but looking at, you know, that would improve, as part of that, you know, improving the transit services and frequency at that station, reconfiguring our bus operations so that it works better for both pedestrians and for our buses than the current setup. I know that the Niccollet Interchange is another component that we are working closely with the city and with the county with as well, and the state with on that front. And then want to highlight our Burnsville Bus Garage modernization, which is fully funded and is currently underway. If you go to our bus garage, I've rough drive there, you'll see that we are reconfiguring the bus garage in the maintenance area completely. We're bringing some of our fueling operations indoors for particularly our Connect vehicles. And then we're going to enhance our building system, infrastructure overall. So really just modernizing the entire facility and making it more operational.
Looks nice.
We think so, too. Now we just got to make it happen.
Yeah.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention where we stand legislatively and where we're looking at to ultimately better our services, which I want to highlight that in 2023, the state legislature passed a sales and use tax increase of point seven-five percent for the metro area. That is already into effect. That is just for transit in the region. However, all of that funding right now goes to the Met Council to essentially distribute how they see fit. That has always been a problem for us, as those who have been around here know.
Don't they have a lot of best?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we are currently working not only with the Met Council to receive what we believe is our fair share, but also working at the legislature, you know, to put it into statute, what that fair share looks like so that we can just have funding certainty for the future. Because all these great things that Joy and I sit here and talk about, you know, we want to provide a bunch of Connect service. We want to do increased frequency where we say, we have all these needs and we see all this demand. Right now, we just don't have that budget certainty. And we're having to rely too much on essentially negotiating with really council staff for a policy that they can change at any time if they want.
Well, it's very interesting that the second largest transit authority in the state gets only two-point-one-eight percent. Are you kidding?
It's, it's, so right now, the, like I say here, the, so the current funding model, which again is just my council policy. So they are, the, the only thing in statute right now says that suburban transit providers like MBTA should be provided, need to be provided a portion of sales tax funds for micro transit services. That's, that's it. But there's no dedicated number. There's, there's no suggested amount. It's just, you got to give them something. So we're getting something. It's not nothing. You know, we're getting ten million dollars for, which is great. You know, we're putting, we're putting that to use, but our needs are just greater at the end of the day. And if we're looking solely at ridership, we don't believe that's the best way of looking at the value we provide to the community, especially when you're looking at something like micro transit, which is a coverage-based service. It's obviously not going to be a high ridership service, but it very much serves a community need and is recognized within, you know, the state, the nation, transit world as being a coverage-based service, like Dolly Ride Services are, demand response. So we're working with them to try and, you know, right-size whatever that amount's going to be. But, you know, Mayor Couts, I know you've been dealing with this issue for, for a while.
For a long time.
Yes, and you've been a great supporter of ours, and we're going to continue to need that support as we continue.
Councilmember Goss.
We, we were at an event last night where the mayor was giving the State of the City, and we had a few legislators there. And I want you to know that Councilmember Keely was lobbying very heavily for what you're talking about right now with those legislators.
Yes.
He's kind of non-stopping that one.
I don't know if you guys know this, but Councilmember Keely is the Chair of the MBTA Board.
Oh, no, we know this.
He might mention that every once in a while.
We do know this, yes, yes.
The great part about, you know, it's, it's too bad that Councilmember Keely can't be here tonight, but he's actually, I think, probably most of you were at a National League of Cities event, but he's actually promoting micro transit service to a group of outside state cities, or outside of state cities, to really talk about the success of MBTA Connect. So Joy and I this week were working on coaching them to a very similar presentation that we're giving the council right now.
Yeah. Well, the nice thing about MBTA is MBTA has been chaired by two Burnsville. So I chaired MBTA twice, the board twice, and, and helped build, create the governance the first time I was in the late nineties.
Yeah, so we, we might be looking to reinvent that again, and we're looking for all of your help as, however that's going to shape itself out with, you know, whether it be at the legislative level, at the state level, or working with the council, or whatever that may turn out to be. But it's, it's, it's great that we have this added funding for transit in the region. It, it literally doubles the amount of transit funding, which is great overall, but we, at the end of the day.
Well, we got a lot of funding for the Red Line.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not going to dive into that too much.
I'm not going to go down that road. That was a long fight.
So, you know, hopefully in a year from now, we'll, we'll come back and give an update on that front, that there was some, some movement there. But I think really this year is, at least at the legislature, just positioning ourselves for what our needs are. And I, we really don't expect much, honestly, to occur in this session, but I think in the next legislative session is when we're really going to have to be serious about what our ask is and, and really looking for your assistance in lobbying for those funds. We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I highlight this is no news to you guys. Thirty-five W under construction is, it is impacting our services without a doubt on County Road thirteen there. But our team, you know, working with the city, you know, Mark and his team have been absolutely great, keeping us informed of, you know, the efforts that are, you know, happening there, what the impacts are going to be. So we have made, particularly our route four-four-four is what's impacted. So we've already got messaging on how, on how that route detour is going to be impacting riders. And right now, it's minimally, but as the summer months drag on, it's, it's going to be worse. But we are, we are ready for it, and we will adapt like we do, as always.
I think we ask our questions as we went along, and thank you so much for coming and presenting. And not only to us, but we have a listening audience with our residents, so thank you so much for coming in.
It was absolutely our pleasure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, the next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. And this is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda, not in application form, that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Henderson, is there anyone online who wishes to address the council?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you so much. We will then move on. The next item is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindbergh, are there any emergency items?
Nothing from staff.
Okay, members of the council. Okay, we will move on. The next item is the consent agenda. This is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on the consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone who wants to remove an item from the consent agenda from the audience for a separate discussion and vote? Mrs. Henderson?
No.
Okay. City Manager Lindbergh, anything?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Members of the council, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. We are now at the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is a public hearing, and this is to approve on-sale intoxicating liquor and on-sale Sunday license for Oasis Hospitality LLC doing business as Urban Oasis nine oh one, County Road forty-two West, Unit B, one fifty. Mrs. Erica Henderson, our deputy city clerk, is presenting. Mrs. Henderson?
Great, thank you. So P S Hospitality Burnsville LLC doing business as eight-eight-eight, which is the food hall at the mall, previously was approved for a liquor license, for the on-sale liquor license and Sunday liquor license back on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. However, when the Department of Health went out to conduct their inspections, they would not allow the food hall to get one license for the, all the food vendors. Instead, they require each food stall to get their own license. So because of that, Oasis Hospitality LLC doing business as Urban Oasis was created, and this would allow for the eight-eight-eight name to remain for the food hall. Urban Oasis will be the only food vendor that will serve liquor, and they have applied for an on-sale liquor license and a Sunday license. The Burnsville Police Department has conducted their background investigation, and nothing was found. And license issuance is contingent upon the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, submittal of all required documents, and payment of the associated license fee. And City Code does require a public hearing for all new liquor licenses.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Henderson? Okay. This is a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record.
Awesome, thank you. Mayor, my name is Brandt Erwin, last name is E R W I N. I'm an attorney in Minneapolis who specializes in liquor licensing and alcoholic beverages. I represent the applicant here. I think that summation was absolutely accurate. This is kind of the second go-around for this location. I don't have much to add to that, other than to say, first and foremost, I wanted to thank both Erica Henderson and Jared Shepherd for their time and their assistance throughout this process. It's kind of a relatively new concept in the state of Minnesota to have a food hall structured like this. And so it's been an evolving process since this first came before you last year. So I wanted to thank them for their time and their assistance because they've been really, really great to work with. It was, I walked up before the meeting because this was the first time to meet them in person. Everything's by Zoom, so it was nice to, to meet them and to thank them in person. The only other thing that I'll say is, you know, the, the client is very eager and excited to, to, to get up and running and to get this location operational, and is really looking forward to continue and to help to revitalize its property. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Well, thank you for coming in, and thank you for your words of appreciation for our staff. staff. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
When will you be operating?
Yeah. So originally, the plan was May 1. And given today is April 22, that's going to be delayed a little bit. But the plan is summer 2025. I know that's a little bit ambiguous, but once the license itself is issued, it has to go to the state, and then they issue the buyer's card. They are fairly close to having everything completed as it relates to construction. You know, there's, there's a couple of components to this. It's not just the food hall. There's a separate kind of grocery store area, too. So they're going to get the certificates of occupancy, I think, for both of those at the same time. But so they are looking at summer 2025.
Thank you.
I also wanted, if I could, just that MBTA presentation was fantastic. They did a really good job. And as somebody who travels quite frequently, that option to take transport to the airport is phenomenal. I mean, I, I live in St. Paul. I'm almost tempted to drive down and park at Burnsville and take the bus. So just wanted to say, they did a really good job.
It'd be cheaper.
Yeah, right. It would be much cheaper.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
We really appreciate it. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, Mrs. Henderson, is there anyone online?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you. The next item is also a public hearing, and this is to approve an off-sale 3-2 malt liquor license for Cub Stores Holding LLC, doing business as Cub Foods 1750, County Road 42 West. Mrs. Henderson, our deputy city clerk is presenting. Mrs. Henderson?
Yes, thank you. So Cub Store Holdings LLC, doing business as Cub Foods, so it's the new location up over on 42. They had submitted an application for an off-sale 3-2 malt liquor license for in the grocery store.
Okay.
So that's what this is for. The off-sale intoxicating liquor license for the liquor store itself was previously approved on April 2, 2024.
Yeah.
So Burnsville Police Department have conducted their background investigation, and nothing was found on the principles involved. License issuance is contingent upon the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, submission of all required documents, and payment of the associated fees. And of course, a public hearing is needed for all new liquor licenses.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Henderson? Okay, very good. Is this a public hearing? Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Mrs. Henderson, anyone on?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Council members and members of the public, there are no other items to come before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you so much, and have a good night.